Okay, 6.11, our 1:45 PM item, consideration of letter of support for Calwild State Coastal Conservancy grant funding request to support Upper Eel River watershed community visioning process. This is from Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier, and it looks like we've got staff here as well.
It's good afternoon Supervisors, Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you will be aware, Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier have been strong advocates for Lake County's priorities surrounding Lake Pillsbury. Your Board and staff engaged in this area of priority have been consistent in stating Lake County's opposition to removal of Scott Dam. Unequivocally, your Board has stated that is Plan A. Additionally, with no entity having emerged to assume operation of the Potter Valley project, we have a need to be positioned and prepared to provide community-supported priorities for restoration of the currently inundated and surrounding areas that strongly consider and reflect Lake County's needs. If their project is funded, Calwild is committed to assisting with those Plan B considerations through their proposed visioning process. For clarity, Calwild's funding application has already been submitted. Since submittal, the environment surrounding the proposed decommissioning has changed to a certain extent, and Calwild staff have acknowledged a need to work closely with the Coastal Conservancy and others to make adjustments as needed in what is truly a developing situation. And I want to be clear, the matter before your Board today is an opportunity to submit a letter of support for Calwild's application. As drafted, there are multiple statements that indicate dam removal is proposed and not certain at this stage, which are intended to signal your Board's continued opposition to dam removal. Staff can appreciate, though, that members of your Board and the public may wish that that statement be strengthened to strengthen the clarity of the distinction that there are those Plan A and Plan B scenarios. And so Johanna, if you can project the version I sent you. So the following proposed language could be added, to just clarify further. "The Lake County Board of Supervisors has maintained consistent opposition to removal of Scott Dam, Plan A, if you will. Additionally, we recognize should removal of Scott Dam prove inevitable, restoration and redevelopment of the currently inundated and surrounding areas must be undertaken as responsibly as possible, Plan B. The visioning process Calwild's application would provide for is supportive of those Plan B interests." Ryan Henson and Mark Green of Calwild are here in the Board chambers today to respond to any questions that your Board may have and the public may have. If it pleases your Board, Calwild staff can likewise offer some remarks now.
Good afternoon, it's a pleasure to appear before you again. I'm Mark Green from Calwild. This project arises out of a difficult situation. The question of what is to happen with these dams has been in the air for decades now. And unfortunately, we at Calwild view one possible future as being very similar to what happened on the removal of the dams on the Klamath, which would be that Lake County would basically be left with nothing if the dam is removed. If the dams are taken out, then PG&E will go away, and that will be the end result. That's what happened to Siskiyou County up in the Klamath. And we feel that there's both an injustice in that and that the best conservation outcome is the implementation of opportunities for recreation, for fire resilience, for forest management, all of those kinds of pieces that PG&E and the fisheries agencies aren't really going to pay attention to. So this community visioning process is designed to draw together stakeholders, tribes, property owners, agencies, all of those that have a voice and an interest in this. Residents, people that have something to say about the future of what happens here. The decision about whether or not the dams come out is not really, it's not our area. We've never taken a position on it one way or another, and we have no intention of doing so. What we can do, however, is we can bring people together to talk and to identify ways that we can improve recreational opportunities, economic development through tourism, fire resilience, and all those other things that will benefit the future of the county and the Upper Eel Drainage. So that is the project that's before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Our Senior Policy Director, Ryan Henson, is also here to answer questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Go ahead.
Do you have anything to add?
So I just want to add, you mentioned Siskiyou, and I was just talking to my colleagues earlier during our lunch break, met with Supervisor Ed Valenzuela from Siskiyou County, asked him how everything was going with the decommissioning of the dams in Klamath. And what he stated to me was, Bruno, don't put your feet in the dirt and try to hit the brakes on anything happening. I wish we had looked at a Plan B. Obviously, we are going to continue to advocate for the dam. We feel there's a great reason, not just for Lake County, but the whole entire region, for the purpose of having a dam up there. But if we don't start planning for a different outcome, we may just end up with what was submitted by PG&E since this has been on the agenda. PG&E does not have anything in their decommissioning plan right now about restoration, about anything that cares for what Lake County would like to see. And without us pushing for this Plan B simultaneously while looking to make sure we still get our Plan A, we're not going to get anything. And so personally, I didn't see anything that was in the letter that was offensive towards the views of Lake County when it comes to Potter Valley project. The added language helps to clarify and ensure that it's recognized, that we're not just saying, okay, I guess we're done shrugging our shoulders. But without a plan, you're only going to get what you're given, and we got to be at the table to figure out how we can manage what the outcomes will be. And so I think our job here is to manage outcomes. And I appreciate the relationship that we've built with Calwild over the past few months in trying to figure out what is it that we can do because Plan B is important, or else there is no plan, and then we're going to have to pick up the pieces, which is even worse. So I just wanted to make that statement, appreciate your efforts so far, and I'd love to continue working with you guys.
Thank you, we look forward to that. Are there any other questions?
No questions, just a statement. Just, I know that I received this, someone said, about a month ago from Mark and Ryan in order to obtain some support from us on this, on our behalf. You know, and I'm glad that we took the time to look this over because I know that there was some folks from other entities like the Lake Pillsbury Alliance and whatnot that had some comments, and I know it didn't really necessarily apply to the letter and applied to the grant that you submitted for, some of the information there. And I don't know if that's in the comments or attached or anything, but I know it was submitted. But I think for us, I'm glad that we're talking about that extra verbiage. Matthew, thank you for presenting that for everyone because I think a lot of times, and it's not pertaining to Calwild, there's other agencies that read what we do and how we comment, and they assume that we're just, yes, we are in agreement with everything that's happening because we're kind of writing a letter of support or something. So we have to keep emphasizing, well, our Plan A is this, but we know that possibly this may happen. So we were just in a recent meeting with another state agency that had stated, well, you agree with it. We've seen your letter. The letter, no, we don't agree with it. You know, we were told to comment this way because we weren't allowed to comment about keeping the dam. So like, we always have to emphasize that, and that's not to be radicals or anything like that. We just want to be specific so people know that, yeah, we know what's happening, possibly, but we're not totally in agreement, and we want to advocate for what we can, if there's a chance. So just wanted to highlight that.
Absolutely, thank you. I should also clarify something about the process here, which is that when we went to the Coastal Conservancy, for various internal reasons, they wanted this application to be on the agenda for their November 30th meeting. What that did was it gave us four days to put together an application, which was kind of a scramble, and there were some details that were inaccurate in that grant application. They weren't pivotal details, but there were some things that were commented on by the Potter Valley, I'm sorry, by the Lake Pillsbury Alliance. And they're correct, and we will correct those factual errors and move forward with the better understanding. But it was quite a few days in our office getting that together so that we could meet their deadline. They're meeting two days from now.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Yeah, I get where you're coming from, but I can't look at this as anything but Plan B turning into Plan A right before our eyes. And I appreciate the addition of a paragraph to clarify that we're not really supporting Plan B with no consideration of Plan A, but your grant proposal does that. There's nothing in your grant proposal that would do anything but facilitate discussions about what happens after the dam is removed. Although there's no history of advocacy on the question of dam removal, you know, what I see on the website sees a clear commitment to wild and scenic rivers. I don't see any expertise on considering alternatives to dam removal. So it's really hard for me, even though I support the idea that a Plan B should be at least studied. What's missing here is any effort that I'm aware of, that anybody is studying Plan A, that anybody has put a grant application together to put Plan A together. And I don't know, based on the sheer volume of letters and emails we get from the community up there, that is basically demanding this body to come up with a Plan A and to fight for the dam and to study things like partial decommissioning, fish passage projects, sediment removal, that would relieve the seismic issue. And I just don't know that this does this. And I also want to challenge the assertion that it's common knowledge and commonly accepted knowledge that whatever seismic safety issues that are going on with that dam have been vetted and discussed, that we can conclude that it is prohibitively expensive to even consider attempting repairs of that dam. And that may be a side issue to this grant application. I honestly think between PG&E and the Division of Dam Safety, some type of public disclosure needs to happen so that the public and this body can conclude whether it's a dead dodo so that this Plan B actually is the Plan A, and we should message it on that basis, or if there are opportunities for feasibility studies about partial decommissioning and moving around sediment removals to at least flog some extra years out of that structure. So this is a tough one for me. I do acknowledge that Plan A is looking tougher by the day. Before we support a grant application for close to a half a million dollars to facilitate, am I getting that wrong?
It's a quarter.
Quarter mil, okay, only a quarter million compared to how many pennies have been allocated toward saving the dam.
I'd like to interrupt real quick. Cal, so we met with Calwild after writing the letter of Plan A and Plan B in order to move forward in figuring out what Plan B was. Calwild was not contacted to advocate for us for Plan A. We are doing our advocacy on our own. I just, I kind of want to check the tone from the Board in the sense that Calwild is known for specific work. I have known Ryan for a while, him and I met up in the Cache Creek Wilderness in discussing some of the issues to the east of Clear Lake. We are looking at, and maybe I'm going to say too much, but we're looking at potential, if the dam comes down, we need a Lake Pillsbury 2.0, not a Lake Pillsbury is dead situation. So I just want to make sure that we're not saying, why are you not working with us on Plan A when that was not the general concept of how we contacted Calwild and introduced each other to one another and started working towards this. Now, we didn't ask them to submit for the grant, that was separate, but at the same time, it fits within the concept of the conversations that we've had. So I would direct that to Supervisor Crandall and myself for the advocacy because there was never a request for them to advocate for Plan A, knowing that we were only having that communication and that relationship to set up for what Plan B would be like if Plan A fails. Plan A is different people, different partners, and different concepts. This is a complete separate track. So to blend in the advocacy for the dam staying there and having that conversation with Calwild, it's just, it's an improper conversation other than with those that are working on Plan A. I hope that helps to make sense.
Can I finish my comments, though? Thank you for that clarification.
Go ahead.
So tell me what the Plan A is, Russian River, what, Federation, or whatever it is?
Not our agenda item is the letter. And Matthew, you were going to add something.
Yeah, I felt Supervisor Sabatier well summarized the situation, but I did want to just state that, you know, I have a great deal of respect for the concerns that you're expressing Supervisor Green, and very much appreciate your engagement on the topic, I think, you know, that we all do, and I don't want that to be missed either. And there are these multiple tracks that are occurring, and it is a complex and dynamic situation. And we're trying to be prepared on as many fronts of that as possible. And so that's why this item is before us today, is should the Plan B scenario prove inevitable, there are few partners that we could find better prepared than Calwild to ensure that it's the best possible Plan B. So, and that's the entirety of what this particular item addresses today, and I do appreciate the relevancy, the importance of the arguments that you're making as well. It's just that this is focused on the Plan B element specifically.
I wanted to say the same thing. Like, I felt like Mr. Rogers being proud of you with your comments, really. I was really happy with what you were saying. It's unfortunate that the Brown Act doesn't allow, like, us to talk to you about that and let you know what's happening with Calwild. But again, when you were talking, I was smiling, but I just knew that it wasn't them that, it's not their fault, per se. But I think hopefully another group comes that needs to hear that, and we'll give you the chance to say those same things because I like what you said. Thank you Supervisor Green for saying your words, I appreciate them.
Okay.
Hello, Ryan Henson, Policy Director with Calwild, and grew up in Round Valley and in Mendocino watershed, Van Arsdale. My dad worked at the mill there, right on the river. And you're right Supervisor, we are a conservation group. We do support wild and scenic rivers, but we hadn't been involved in the overriver dam removal. And the reason that, we were drafted for this actually, and you might ask who, it was Congressman Thompson. He's known me for years, and I started receiving mysterious texts saying, you need to help Lake County. And I said, well, who is this? And so that's how it started. And I thought he was talking about the Cache Creek Wilderness that Supervisor Sabatier and I had been working on, but it was actually the Eel. And he said, if the Eel River dams come out, he knows I'm the biggest Mendocino National Forest nerd on the planet, non-Forest Service nerd for the Mendocino. I love it, I've dedicated my life to exploring it. And I tried to listen to people very carefully. And we also like to craft ideas from what we say is from the grassroots up. And so that's, and that's why Congressman Thompson urged us to do this. He thought we would take our knowledge of the Mendocino National Forest and our love for Lake and Mendocino counties and our love for working with people and try to craft something from the ground up with local stakeholders. And I, we had no plan to get involved here at all. In fact, this is a huge diversion. And we've never applied for a nickel. We've been around since 1976, the age of disco, and we've never applied for a nickel of government money before. This is our first ever government grant, this proposal to the Coastal Commission. It's shocking to hear it's a quarter million dollars, I know. But we need a project coordinator who can lead this facilitation process in a professional way and have it result in, obviously, we're not a government agency, so we have no binding authority, but we want it to result in a vision that we can sell to those who do have power, such as Senator Padilla, and of course Congressman Thompson and Congressman Huffman. And I was wondering if our friends Frank Abely with the U.S. Forest Service, he manages the western side of the Mendocino, the Eel River watershed. I was wondering if he could say something?
Come on up Frank.
Thank you for considering this.
Frank Abely, District Ranger for the Mendocino National Forest. Thank you Chairman and members of the Board. I've worked on the Mendocino National Forest for 15 years now. I started as a hydrologist, I'm well aware of the resources up in the Pillsbury Basin. Before I comment on the proposal, I do want to go on record to say that the U.S. Forest Service does not have any authority or decision authority otherwise about the fate of Scott Dam or Van Arsdale reservoir, nor do we have the authority to take any position on it. What we do have authority to do, and what we are charged to do, is make sure that whatever that decision is, all the resources that we manage are managed to the best possible way they can be managed. And those resources include recreation and of course fire suppression. I've been involved in this project from the very beginning, from when it was a relicensing, through a surrender, and now into the potential decommissioning of the project. And there has been a collaborative effort amongst multiple agencies when it comes to water supply and fish passage and fish habitat. What has received much less attention is recreation and fire suppression. And Forest Service believes that in order to address those issues in the event of a dam removal, the best possible solution has to be another collaborative effort. The Forest Service does not have the capacity to do this, and we also feel that we are better to be a participant than a facilitator. And so when we were approached by Ryan Henson with this idea of helping us facilitate the development of a vision plan, we were immediately very supportive. We've worked with Calwild for decades, and out of all the conservation groups we work with on all kinds of projects, we find them to be the most reasonable, the most logical, and the most cooperative and collaborative than any of them. So we're really happy to have Calwild on board to help us collaborate with all the agencies, tribes, and stakeholders up in the Pillsbury area and in Lake County to make sure that the resources are handled properly and that we can still provide quality recreation and fire suppression. So we support Calwild, we have written a letter of support for their grant, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll open it up to the public now. Have anyone here who wishes to give comment? You can come on up and state your name and have three minutes.
Bobby Dutcher at Lakeport. On July 11th, the five of you signed a letter, you know, to Mike Thompson regarding the thing in Lake Pillsbury. And in that said that their position, all the costs related to the above mitigation measures should be borne by PG&E. If PG&E is determined shutting down a project is in their interest, covering the costs and decommissioning, not further burdening California residents, is the least they can do. You know, we really supported that letter, and I still do. If, you know, this decommissioning process, if you do want to, you know, what life looks like after Lake Pillsbury, the cost, like, if you want to hire Calwild, that should be up to PG&E. You know, they've submitted their decommissioning plan, and it's still, it's open for public comment and input. Now, you're already hiring someone else to, or advocating for someone else to be hired with taxpayer dollars to be doing the thing that PG&E should be doing. So I think you should focus on that right now. Once the decommissioning thing is all over, then you could, I don't see the rush why this has to be done, like, immediately right now. I think this should be part of the decommissioning process. And in the letter, in the new letter that, you know, you're talking about submitting now, it says Calwild has never taken a public stance on dam removal. Yet in their application, which is a public document, it says, "The Eel River is a dwindling fishery which has been brought to near extinction by the presence of two dams in its upper drainage." They don't discuss climate change, the habitat degradation in the 50s and 60s from logging, invasive species that were introduced to the rivers. There's a lot of factors that went into the demise of salmon, but their application specifically says these two dams are the total cause of the whole Eel River demise. Even the branches that have nothing to do with it, Eel River, Tomcay Creek, some other things. The people that go up there and count fish, they can't find fish anymore. Lake Pillsbury has nothing to do with those tributaries. So there's a lot more to it than that. And then, you know, if you're going to support this application, you know, just from the beginning to end, there's just, you know, multiple errors in this thing. Legislative district, I guess my state Assembly Speaker is Jim Wood. You know, I've voted for my Assembly member a couple times, and her name's not Jim. That's not, our Assembly representative for Lake County is not Jim Wood. It goes on to say also that it's a spectacularly beautiful area of redwood forests. There's not a single native redwood tree upstream from Van Arsdale. There's no redwood trees whatsoever. There are no redwood forests, you know, we're still talking about Lake County, we're not talking about Garberville. There's oak chaparral, you know, oak woodlands are like you see out on Highway 175 with the oak trees and the grass underneath them. Chaparral is the brush up above them on the hillsides. So oak chaparral, I mean, I've worked in forestry for 25 years, I've never even heard that term before. They're two different things. And riparian forest, you know, riparian vegetation is usually willow trees.
Your time is up.
Well, they've got, they all have unlimited time.
I know, well, it was not public comment with their presentation, but how much more do you have to?
Oh, not much. Oh, anyway, I would not.
Why don't you just finish?
Yeah, I would, I do not support you sending this letter out. I think there's plenty of time later on. This application is badly flawed, the miles of spawning habitat, they're saying it's 280 miles. I think I've never heard that before, even the advocates of it. And I know a couple of Supervisors did sign on as advocates for this with the list that they had. But other than that, it reads like a who's who of Northern California dam haters, you know. California Trout, the Sierra Club, Friends of Eel River, you know, their mission in life seems to want to take dams down. And there's not very many groups, I know, I'll make sure the Chamber of Commerce doesn't support it. But yeah, I still, you still need to keep fighting for the, fighting for the dam. You know, Plan A has got to be our focus. You know, in 1912, in time, you know, Board of Supervisors didn't pay attention to our water rights, Yolo County wound up with them. That day forward, that's all they were known for. So unless you fight for Lake Pillsbury as hard as you can going forward, that's what this Board will be known for, be the Board that lost Lake Pillsbury. So, yeah, I don't, I don't support this thing, you guys sending this letter in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, just real quick, we signed on to bring it to the Board. We didn't sign on to the letter just yet. We just, we, we brought this agenda item to discuss the letter. It wasn't necessarily to approve it until we brought it here. So just letting you know, because I know you mentioned that at the end.
Well, if you're going to support it, you're, yeah, you're, I would not, again.
Oh, no, no, I, well, you mentioned that we signed on to it. We just signed on to bring it to the Board, we didn't sign on to approve it, per se.
Well, the application has your name in it.
You have to come up, we'll get you up to the microphone.
Yeah, paragraph 12, "Project was or will be planned meaningful community engagement and broad community groups. At this time, we have received oral expressions of support from California Trout, Friends of Eel River, Bruno Sabatier, and E.J. Crandall."
Yeah, no, I know that they did ask in an email for an oral, that's, I, did I give you oral support already if you can come to the microphone? Because I don't remember giving oral support or...
If not, it was certainly a misunderstanding on my part. My, my understanding was that when we met for the EcoFlight over the upper drainage, that we had a conversation with both of you Supervisors in which you said that you supported the idea of the project and wanted to see it go forward. If I misunderstood that, then that's on me.
Well, this is regarding for the actual grant?
No, it was for the project. The grant is the means to the end of the project.
Okay. Because I do know also that there was another email sent to me asking for, for me to approve verbally or give some sort of a statement that I do, and I couldn't without the letter.
Right. That was a request for you to confirm your verbal support.
Right, and I couldn't do that.
Okay. I understand then that that's the case. We had been asked for that by members of the Coastal Conservancy staff.
So can you speak to the inaccuracies in the application? I know you mentioned them generally before, but those were some of the items that I was concerned about, too?
Yes, we had a rush. We had to pile this thing together in a ma- We had to pile this thing together in a matter of days. And we're working on a lot of other stuff throughout the state and there are only eight of us on staff for the organization. So a lot of it fell to me. And I would, I did research. I contacted our policy staff. I did as much due diligence as I could, but there are, there are some details that are apparently inaccurate. I know that the word redwoods should have been pulled out of the version that got submitted to the Conservancy because, no, we're very clear, there are no redwoods in that area. But that is, I take responsibility for any inaccuracies that are in the, the application. But the, the description of the project is completely accurate. That being that we will engage those members of the community, stakeholders, tribes that have an interest of whatever side in relation to what happens if the dams come out. It really is, this is more like an insurance policy. It's like, okay, you're going to fight like hell to get the dam preserved. But if not, you have this insurance policy of these additional projects. And possibly some of those projects could be implemented whether or not the dams come out. What we've learned from the Conservancy is that there's quite a lot of funding floating around right now between the, the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act and bond funds that have been approved at the state level. And Lake County should get its share of those. So this, this process will establish a project list that will then present that opportunity.
And our assembly member, you can make, you can add her too.
Okay, well, of course. Of course. Sure.
Can you clarify? Because I glommed on the page three of this supplement. I saw a total project budget of 470-plus K. I was told the grant application is for some lesser amount. So if I'm going to be driving a six-digit nail in the coffin of Scott Dam, my question is, what are we supporting? This grant application for a share of this half million dollars? And have you identified other revenue sources? Is there going to be a later ask for the county itself or the watershed protection district?
There will not. I can guarantee that. The, the most likely sources include PG&E, as the gentleman, as the gentleman stated. PG&E morally, in my opinion, is doing this on the cheap and has a responsibility to Lake County in order to make it whole. So we will be talking and we'll be seeking other sources as well. We have a list of identified possible sources. But because this was front-loaded to the November 30th meeting of the Conservancy, this is the first funding application that has come forward.
So with this grant, if for some reason the dam stays, what happens to this grant?
To the grant? Well, we still do the project. The dam isn't going to come out before the project will be over.
I think you said it best where it can still be utilized to help upgrade what's there currently. Because what's there has been kind of an organic growth, not an economic development plan. And here there would be a plan that we can blend into what's still going to stay there if Plan A is successful. If Plan B is not, then we have that plan to look at entirely. So I see it as not a waste and a good way for us to make sure that we can move forward.
I just wanted to ask in that format to make sure, so if people, you know, are tuning in, that if the dam stays, you're still going to get the grant funding for the same purpose?
Yes. Yes, for the same purpose. To engage the community and identify particularly in the recreation and fire resiliency areas, things that they, that they see as beneficial and that they'd like to see. Mountain biking trails, for example, is something that I know the Mendocino Forest doesn't really have any of and could really use. So these are, this is to create opportunities for the future.
So, but the timeline on this work, when is it set to begin?
January.
Okay, January. And so we're not going to have any idea about the Plan A before this work starts? So it's, this is going to either be prior to or congruent?
Parallel, yeah.
Parallel.
Right, parallel.
Which was the entire?
Right.
Plan in the first place is not to, one, fail, choose the next, is to have parallel tracks?
Right. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I'm going to see if there's anyone else in the public.
Okay.
Who wishes to give comment? Do we have anyone else in the chambers or in the Zoom room?
Yeah, we have iPhone 7431.
Okay, go ahead, iPhone. And please state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Star 6.
Star 6 to unmute. Okay, try speaking?
Sinqueeny?
Carol. You can unmute, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
This is Carol Sinqueeny. I'm one of the directors for the Lake Pillsbury Alliance. This is quite a lively meeting. I wanted to say that the idea of a vision for the Lake Pillsbury Basin is good and we can support that. I'd like to believe that this would be done and implemented whether it's removal of the dam or that the dam stays. But what's most important for us to convey is we feel a bit caught in the middle. The grant application itself omitted or misrepresented the community that is there. And I'm bringing this up because I want the public to be aware. The application mentioned a small number of homeowners that live in a single development adjacent to the lake is incorrect. There are three residential tracts, 300 homes, properties, and two businesses in the basin. Many of these are longstanding, multi-generational families. And we are probably outnumbered by the sheer number of recreational visitors that come to the forest, particularly in the summer months. Like Bobby Dutcher, we disagree with the 288 linear miles of spawning grounds. The entire upper Main Stameal River watershed above Scott is 288 square miles with about 30 to 40 potential, 30 to 40 river miles of potential fish habitat. We are concerned, extremely concerned about fire. Lake Pillsbury has a long history of providing water for aerial and ground attacks to fight wildfires in the basin and beyond. The mention of identification of new facilities if needed, quote-quote, is concerning to us. Their biggest concern is that somehow we will not be included in the conversation. And we feel that would be very unfair and inappropriate. We want to work and continue to work with your board, with Calwild, with the Forest Service, and anyone else that truly wants to address the future of the Lake Pillsbury Basin. We do not support dam removal. But if it proceeds, I think it is essential that we work together to create a vision for the headwaters that takes into consideration the Lake Pillsbury stakeholders as they will be the most directly impacted by the future of the Potter Valley project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Were her comments noted for corrections in the application with the population? Okay. We have to trust you because we're not going to have a chance to see the application before it's.
She emailed us with all of those comments in writing.
Okay.
So we already have those for purposes of correcting our information.
Okay. And so when the application is corrected, can you please send it to Matthew and we'll be able to have a record of it? Okay. Do we have anyone else in the Zoom room?
Yeah, iPhone again.
Okay. Okay. iPhone user?
7431.
7431. Unmute. And it looks like you're unmuted?
No.
You trying to speak?
No, it's not working.
Okay, Frank Lynch. You can unmute and you'll have three minutes.
You have not entered any numbers.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Frank.
Hi, this is Frank Lynch. I'm also from the Lake Pillsbury Alliance and I appreciate all the comments made by, actually everyone there. I think all of them have validity to a certain extent. We do have concerns about some of the information on the grant application and those concerns have been noted. I guess the bottom line is, I again push for the Plan A, but I'm also a realist that there may be a need for a Plan B. And if that does come to pass, then I would encourage all the entities, Lake County, the Forest Service, and everyone to think very big. And this is kind of a continuing theme that I've had with conversation with people in that this is a multi-million dollar, if not in total, when it's all said and done, billion-dollar project, when you're considering all the water needs that would need to be developed for the Russian Riverside ultimately and dam removal remediation, et cetera. And Lake County deserves its fair share and the Lake Pillsbury Basin deserves its recognition and fair share. So again, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, are we going to try the iPhone one more time? iPhone user, can you, 7431, can you try star 6, please?
Hello?
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Great.
Here I am. This is a, probably a familiar voice, Melissa Fulton. I was a resident of Lake County and, for over 30 years. And even though I've been retired for a couple of years, I stay in touch with Lake County through the two chambers, Board of Supervisors, meetings, et cetera. I was somewhat, somewhat happy with the comments from Calwild. But I think that the Lake County Board of Supervisors, in support of the residents of Lake County and the Pillsbury area in particular, needs to support only Plan A with a, with much less emphasis on Plan B. This has been going on for a long time. I first became aware of it in 2019 and brought it to the attention of the Lake County Board of Directors, as I was CEO at the time. There is a great concern for all of Lake County and the negative impacts if that dam, if those dams are removed. And I would think that a thorough research and investigation of the cost of making the repairs needs to be undertaken. I think that that should be uppermost as far as efforts from the County of Lake. I do agree that PG&E bears the expense or should be bearing the expense of what they have done or have set in motion. And I was horrified when I attempted to join one of Representative, Congressman Hoffman's meetings and his staff told me I was not allowed to. Luckily Supervisor Crandall has been included in those. And in truth, I'm, I don't know if those meetings are still going on, but it just appears that more effort needs to be focused on Plan A. And it would be interesting if this letter of support, as it's been amended, could be moved forward to another meeting of the supervisors. And I do understand that that is beyond this November 30th deadline that seems to be so imperative to Calwild. So again, my love for Lake County goes on. And I think that it's very important that this item, this issue, needs to have further investigation from all sides.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the time you've given me. Thank you. And I will stay tuned.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Do we have anyone else? No. Okay.
Just one more thing to clarify.
I'm just going to close public comment.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So in, in going back, because now I've realized, you know, our flight with Calwild. And I want to go back a little bit because at one time, I want to say, closer towards like June, May, we've been meeting with Congressman Thompson. He's been actually talking with us, advocating for us in regards to the Scott Dam, Lake Pillsbury situation. In doing so, agencies are like asking for his support left and right. And he always refers them straight back to Lake County. In these discussions, after a while, he started connecting us with groups like Calwild, the, what is it, the Rocky Mountain Elk Group, other, other agencies that have to do with restoration and whatnot. And it's not to submit and go that route as if we are giving up. It is to have something intact on the side. And that's what he's always said. We understand, he understands our stance, but recommended that we have these discussions in case that it did happen. And so we did go on that flight. And that was, I could see how there was a thought that yes, with this grant application, there was complete support. My agreement to Congressman Thompson to meet with all, with you all was just to what we were doing. So I apologize if I gave any, any type of, you know, thought that I was just like fully supportive, but I, you know, I know that everyone's watched my stance on this completely in dealing with Eel Russian River Commission, Potter Valley Two Basin Solution, the NOI parties, now the Russian River Water Forum, and now here we are with this. And so I just wanted to emphasize that because I could tell, again, that there's also limitations between us giving you information Supervisor Green with the Brown Act intact. So I could see how it's frustrating at times. And there's a lot of different issues that we deal with as supervisors were. It's like, wait, I'm just hearing about this? And it's those limitations that put us in the situation at times. But I just wanted to highlight the encouragement that Congressman Thompson's been giving us in regards to Plan, having a Plan B and, and things like that. So just wanted to give that information.
Quick follow-up. Can you elaborate? Just because it's unclear to me.
Yeah.
Obviously I have to respect the people that are on point and I have to respect the process or processes.
Yeah.
And so it's unclear to me if this is a standalone thing or if it's integrated with the Russian River Water Forum, which is doing its own investigations or programs or something like that. So like whither the forum if this is approved?
Do you want to answer that? Would you be, because I, from what I understand, this is a standalone. This has nothing to do with Russian River.
This is a standalone project. And the idea was that it would be a standalone project so that there wouldn't be any politicking around it, that it would simply be an opportunity for people to come together and express what their interests and concerns and vision was. The, we would invite representatives of the forum to participate in, in the engagement, but they're not in any way formally related to managing the project or anything like that. Does that make sense?
No.
It doesn't? Okay. Can you ask it again?
Can I, can I help to clarify? Again, this, so we drafted that letter, Plan A, Plan B. We submitted that over to Congressman Thompson. And as we sat down with him and he's asking us, what have you created to fulfill Plan B? Obviously Plan A, he knows what exactly we're working on. But are you just calling it a Plan B and not creating a plan? And so he provided some people for us to connect with. We connected with Calwild. This is all unilaterally from Lake County, looking into crafting a Plan B in case Plan A falls through. And I see this in a similar way as, and maybe it's a horrible analogy, but here I go. I go. Um, people who were fully against cannabis when all they wanted was 50 feet of buffer. Well, had you sat down at the table with us and offered 50 feet of buffer, we would have given that to you, but since you didn't want anything at all, and eventually it passed, you didn't get any of what you wanted. Well, we, we, we have to prepare for getting something that we need rather than nothing at all. Because PG&E, if you look at the decommissioning plan, is not giving us anything at all unless we continue to fight. We're going to continue to fight for no dam removal, but on the dam removal, what it looks like is utter crap left in Lake Pillsbury area. So we have to craft a Plan B while simultaneously doing Plan A. I, I, I want to speak to Frank and Carol. Uh, they are absolutely advocates of Plan A. We sit with them during the Russian River Forum. They, uh, provided a presentation alongside of us. I, I'm not sure if they're aware, but that presentation we did, which was either September 7th or October 7th.
October 7th.
I forget which one it was. Um, dislodged a whole new level of conversation that Supervisor Crandall and I have been involved in, which was advocating for Plan A, saying, here's something that you're not thinking about, that you're going to really mess up your environment further than just the impacts on Lake County. So we are seeing Plan A create new conversation and new contacts for us. And so.
But not through the Russian River Water Forum?
That was at the Russian River Water Forum that we made those presentations, and we were provided feedback from the Russian River Forum saying, you have completely changed the conversation. And I'm not sure what you're looking from me, other than I can't control about whether a dam comes up or come down, other than continue to fight.
What am I supposed to make of the forum process now? Because basically, it's all Eel River interest. They've dropped their plan with PG&E. It's a dam-busting plan as far as Scott Dam goes. So if we're engaged with the forum, is that where Plan A lives now?
No.
Okay, where does Plan A live?
Right here in Lake County. Because we're the only ones fighting for Plan A other than Lake Pillsbury Alliance. No one else cares what happens to Lake County. If you want me to be blunt.
Well, to be honest, we do. That's why we're here.
And, and I take that back. We have gotten some great support from Congressman Thompson. Uh, prior to Congressman Thompson becoming our congressman again in this area, we were not getting, we did get a letter from Garamendi, but having the level of contact that we have currently, the level of contact is immense as far as the conversation about Lake Pillsbury. So I, 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 I don't know, it, it's basically a concept of, do you want to prepare for two possibilities while continue to push for one, or do you not want to prepare and read what PG&E is preparing for us, which is not what I want?
And since you took some time to clarify your stance, I'm going to take a moment to clarify mine. I'm not opposed to Plan B planning.
Yeah.
If there's good information that everyone has seen and everyone agrees on that the dam is toast, it seems premature to do this because I don't have any certainty that a Plan A has been crafted, much less any grant application or funding that would support a Plan A pursuit. What we have is, uh, very recently, uh, PG&E dropping its decommissioning plan, and the only differentiation is between a one-year pullout and a phased reduction. I don't know that Calwild has any interest or expertise in things other than dam removal and community visioning on that process. So I, I want to, I want to support this, but, uh, it, absent more information as to the scope and the practicality or the feasibility of any Plan A proceeding, this feels to me like the white flag being waved. And I don't know why others shouldn't feel that way, so.
Yeah, just, obviously, very complicated issue, but, uh, we, we've talked about it. Uh, we know what Plan A is. We, we don't want the dam to come down. The reality is, we need to have a Plan B, and, and I think this is a step, we run them concurrently. Obviously, we're going to have many, many other discussions before this happens, but, um, yeah, I'm in support of this letter today, obviously wishing there was a different outcome that we were pushing towards at this point, but, um, we talked about it. We need to have different options working to continue the struggle that we're going through right now. So I'm in support of it.
Yeah.
In support of the work that the committee's done, um, and Matthew and everyone else on all these conversations we're having, and, yeah, we don't want the dam to come down. That's very clear from this board's standpoint, but we, we've got to fight, and we've got to figure out how we're going to move through that fight.
Right. But I, I do want to address the comment of a white flag because we're nowhere near that. We have all been resolved in our commitment with Plan A, and we have two supervisors and staff and our congressman that are advocating constantly. And you might not know everything that's happening, but that's the nature of how a board works. But we do have conversations from time to time, um, here in closed section. So, um, without getting into any of that, um, we have to, we, we have to be strategic in our planning. We have to have a Plan B. We can't wait because then we're behind the ball, as what's happened in Siskiyou. We have a prime example from Supervisor Valenzuela, who's been through this, who understands, who said they didn't do enough pre-planning. And that's a colleague that has direct experience with this process. I think it's prudent to take that advice. I think it's prudent to do this planning. It's contingency planning. Hopefully, we don't need it, but there will be pieces that come out that can be useful. And, I mean, it's, it's the same with all disaster planning. We have to plan for all of the things, even though they may not happen. So I'm in full support. I appreciate everything that you both do on this because, uh, we, we don't have better advocates right now than the two of you because you are fighting as hard as you possibly can for this dam and for Lake, for Lake Pillsbury. So I don't think that any way we are conceding. We're not. We're just contingency planning.
I think an analogy for me is, uh, the fight for the whole situation is in a stadium. These guys are just asking to sell a vendor outside of the stadium is really kind of, I mean, I don't know if that, does that make sense? I mean, it's, it's not as if, if it, if the dam doesn't come, if it doesn't come down, you're still there doing this, right?
Calling out beer and peanuts in the first.
That's, that's my analogy. Yeah, yeah, sorry. So the changes are?
Noted.
Noted? All right, let's see here. Let me go do it real quick and... Okay, I got it. Why am I? Oh, no, it's one, it's a timed item. There we go, sorry. Madam Chair, I will move, uh, to approve the consideration of a letter for Calwild's State Coastal Conservancy Grant Funding Request to Support, uh, Upper Eel Watershed Community Visioning Process with the addition of the new verbiage, and also to, uh, request that the Calwild, uh, submits their, their improvement, or not their improvements, but the corrections of the grant, uh, description and narrative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.